We hit these big issues. That's all you're getting feedback. This ain't gonna be done.
There's like some website apparently it's like a clearinghouse like deal where you apply. You know what I'm saying? You just like apply you fill out one application.
Be ready to start.
The paperwork too and they would help you do it out. And then help you find scholarships.
Let's see.
Actually like sort of go for two Clemson's that we want now. Clemson's nothing compared to Penn State football. Clemson's like a high school football.
Is she going to the Clemson game?
Then she's been to a couple of Clemson games, but she's uh that's where she wants to go to school right there.
I went to my first one last year and you what amazes me? What amazes me about that Clemson game with you know the run down that hill? I was amazed how fast they had a swing around. I'm saying man, you can do your tip good in there. Oh, I wish I could be a great coach. Potts could be sitting there moping on the field and channel.
Penn State plays tomorrow.
Upstepping over. Get back to the ball.
Maybe a good game during Friday.
I've got so many of them and I can't remember which one.
It's time to start. Everybody ready? Let me call to order the town of Highland Special Board of Commissioners meeting um tonight Tuesday, August the 30th at 6:00 PM. This is a work session of the board to begin crafting and addressing um issues related to creating a amendments to our UDO concerning short-term rentals. One of the things I put in the agenda tonight was a statement of conflict of interest. Let me read this. I know that Josh and I go to many meetings outside the town of Highlands and this statement is always read and I want to read that and then make some comments. Members of the board are reminded that their duty of their duty to avoid conflicts of interest during transaction of town businesses and are asked to disclose any known conflicts of interest or potential conflict with respect to matters that come before the town board. If any member knows of any conflict of interest or potential conflict, please state so at this time. I wanted to say one thing. I know on Facebook, some folks have been making reference to my operation of a whole occupation. I've been doing that for 21 years in R2. I sell the work or my dealer sells it on Main Street in cashers and other communities and also at times I sell directly at art shows. So I wanted to note that is a permitted use in R2 and I have been involved in doing that for many years and I'll make one other comment. I have and my wife have done what we call home exchange two times in 23 years. A home exchange is a swap of houses where somebody from Florida contacts us and says, hey, we want to come to Highlands for the month or week and we say, hey, we want to go to Florida. So we just simply exchange houses. They stay in our house. We stay in there. There's no money involved. So I just wanted to um to make that statement tonight. And if anyone else would like to make a statement concerning any potential or perceived conflict of interest, feel free to do so at this time. Hearing none. Let's move on to opening statements by board members. I do have a prepared statement I would like to make, but I will open the floor up to any of the board members who might want to make a statement as we begin this um this workshop process at this time.
I'd be happy to go after you there.
Okay, sure. Any other people would like to or shall I get started? Okay, let me just let me just go ahead and read this statement that I've been working on. You know, first of all, I want to thank the community on how all of us were civil and courteous to one another in these public hearings. I know Jeannie Chambers, I was taking notes and listening to what people were saying. I remember her and a number of other people made reference to while we have a differing difference of opinion concerning short-term rentals, we're all Highlanders, we're all friends and I hope that after we work through this whole process, that will continue. But I was really appreciative of all the courtesy and civility that I witnessed at the public hearing. I took notes and have reviewed the comments and let me share some of my thoughts about the short-term rental issue and how it potentially impacts Highlands. First of all, I want to say this, the board does not arbitrarily make decisions that are illegal. Like all major decisions, the board consults with legal counsel to determine if a particular decision falls within the law. There may be some debate over legal issues, but over the last nine years that I've been mayor, I've never seen this board just willfully disregard the law in their deliberations. We all have taken oath upon election to follow the state and the US Constitution. Some folks have implied that the board members are are biased. My response is that all of us have our preferences and biases on issues. We're not, and I'm going to use this term, a tabula rasa. That means a blank page when it comes to looking at different issues. We have convictions and positions. Elected officials are not juries nor unbiased journalists. We run for election and present our ideas to the voters on key issue. I along with other candidates in the past election stated position concerning SDRs. My position was that SDR should be regulated, restricted and registered. The voters were very clear on whom they wanted to address this critical issue. And yes, the court rulings concerning my position on registration have been caused me to modify my views on registration. Although there's still the interpretation of the court rulings that allows non-conforming zoning permits to be issued by municipalities. I believe in zoning and the ability of a municipality to determine what uses are allowed in specific zones. Highlands has had zoning for well over 50 years and it has been a cornerstone to plan development. We are in an island of zoning districts surrounded by a county that has no zoning in the Highlands township areas. I don't accept the notion that SDR that if SDRs are prohibited in R1 and R2 that Highlands and its businesses will collapse in an all or nothing economic proposition. Surrounding SDRs in the county will continue to feed businesses in Highlands. I also do not believe that zoning regulations are a de facto taking of property rights, but rather limitation of property usage in designated zones. One advocate for SDRs told me that the town should not kill the goose that laid the golden egg. That is short-term rentals in Highlands. My response is this, short-term rentals have not been the golden egg. The financial position of Highlands has been strong for many decades, well before the recent wave of short-term rentals. Another person told me our major restaurants will fail if we stop SDRs. Those restaurants, for example, the Veranda, Wolfgang, Lakeside and Pale Eddie's have been in operation for at least 30 years. Again, well before the recent surge in SDRs. I'm also told that with the elimination of SDRs, the town will suffer massive losses in tax revenue. The room tax that is now collected from SDRs does not go to the town, but rather to the chamber and visitor's center to promote tourism. Our sales tax collections have been increasing at a steady rate and predictable rate since the Great Recession. Our property values have been increasing for many years. Finally, I'm repeatedly told that Highlands is a tourist town with enterprises such as destination weddings as being essential to future prosperity. I don't fully embrace this model. I believe since its inception, Highlands has been a retreat community where people originally came for part of the year to escape from the heat, overcrowded cities and from diseases such as malaria. We even had a TB sanitarium as a part of this retreat model. With climate change, I see a continued stream of people seeking relief from on the Highlands Plateau. While we have always had tourists, we have had a basic community core of permanent and seasonal residents. Our residents living in neighborhoods have supported our businesses, our churches, our nonprofit organizations and arts institutions. Those residents built the library, the historical society, the biological station, the recent capital expansions in of our churches, the building of the pack and the Bascom. They have been the foundation of support and patronage for such organizations as the Playhouse, the International Friendship Center, the Peggy Crosby Center and the hospital and land trust. If our core residential community is lost to more and more SDR development, the impact and change will be felt throughout our committee, community. I see a new model emerging that is not solely dependent on tourism. Recently, the president of Airbnb stated that about 20% or more of their bookings are now over 30 days, especially where there is sufficient broadband. The virtual work from home model has the potential to change our community by having young and middle career professionals working from home and also being a part of this community. I do not want to say our neighborhoods become SDR or short-term rental hoods. For the future of our town, we need to preserve our residential zones and contain that transient model that short-term rentals create. In short, the Board of Commissioners must take a make decisions for the overall and long-term good of Highlands and the community. For some, this may not be viewed as a spirit of compromise, but the board should not be driven by solely seeking a compromise, but rather by addressing directly the big questions related to short-term rentals. In other words, what actions should the board take to ensure the future of Highlands as a unique, small village, environmentally unique mountain community that we all value and love? This work session will begin this process. That's my statement and I'm open to other boards' statement before we go into the next item.
Dr. Patterson?
I'll I'll make my comments in time when you're pertinent.
Okay, well, I'd like to go ahead, Mayor.
Sure.
A lot of times I get calls and complaints and I remind people that we're a tiny town of 1,060 people. We're not a metropolitan area of 100,000 with unlimited resources and unlimited code enforcement. My concern when I offered for election was healthcare and two years ago, we had 16 openings at the hospital. Now we've got 42 and there's no question that there's a housing crisis. We all love Highlands. A couple from Florida walked past my house today and said they'd give anything to have my house and I just said it's not for sale. Unfortunately, there are people in the audience here tonight who believe that short-term rentals are unlawful in R1 and R2 today. And we all know that our town attorney, who looks like he got a good tan at the beach, his opinion is our regulations are vague at best. So while there's some division unfortunately in the neighborhoods, they are not unlawful today. What I'm hoping we can accomplish tonight is find something we can all agree on. I think both sides agree that we need stronger guidelines, you know, to help preserve the residential character of the neighborhoods. I've told you all I majored in planning. I was utility manager, but the textbook definition of zoning is to prevent unjustified and uncompensated harm to neighboring and adjoining land uses. You've said we need to be kind to each other, Mayor, and I agree with that. We make mistakes when we rush. I hope we'll take our time and I hope we'll involve all sides in the discussion. Some of you know, I used to work the chairman of the Highlands Neighborhood Association. Her husband works for a company that I worked with closely, have known them for years. And she stopped by the house the other day and said, Mark, there's not been enough dialogue. We've got a letter from Derek Allen that says he'd like to have more conversation. I I hope tonight that we can generate some guidelines, that we can have conversation with both sides and work towards a compromise. A legal battle is not going to help anybody and I brought, I don't know what your plan is, Mayor, but I brought the comments from the Highlands Neighborhood Association and the Safe Highlands Group, their comments to the planning commission's recommendation.
I'd like to rebut Commissioner Haynes' assessment that that they are legal in R1 and R2. And I based that on our current UDO, which clearly says commercial uses shall include recreation and entertainment, overnight accommodations, retail wholesale businesses and restaurants, professional offices, studios and industrial businesses. Commercial is commercial. We have residential businesses, we have commercial businesses. Now, it's been said that the courts have decided that that short-term rentals are commercial. No, that's that's actually not true. Not commercial. Oh, sorry, not commercial. That that's actually not true. What what courts have interpret court, courts don't make law. Okay. Courts interpret law. Commercial, non-commercial for short-term rentals or rentals or anything else is not made by state law. It's that is specifically delegated to local jurisdictions, county governments or or municipal governments to decide because they're the ones that do land use law, because those are the local ordinances. And if we have in our ordinance that overnight accommodations are commercial, then the court has to say, okay, that's a law. We are duly elected. We are a legislative body, just like the legislature in Raleigh is a legislative body. We make these laws through the process that everybody has to go through with the planning board, which is the citizens' comments, their recommendations, then the then the 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 public hearings, we take all that into account. We don't make these rules just up because we decide to do that. Okay, we go through a process and these are the rules that we have agreed to live by. Now, you're saying, well, okay, but what are overnight accommodations? Well, overnight accommodations are for people who don't live here. In other words, visitors. We have people who have have a home here or have a home here in the sense that they either own it or they rent it long-term. Okay, or they visit. So if you visit, you don't have a home here or place to live. You have to have an overnight accommodations. So to me, it's pretty clear and simple in a very logical way that overnight accommodations are for visitors. So we have residents, community residents and visitors. So who are you going to prioritize? Who has actually built this? Many of the things that that the mayor said, who's actually built this community? Community residents or short-term visitors? We are not a tourist town. We are not Gatlinburg and we have had this discussion for years and we've decided we do not want to be Gatlinburg. Okay, we don't want to be a tourist town. We want to be a community where everybody knows everybody and helps everybody and we've done everything from the Bascom to the Playhouse to the pack. Over 100 years ago, the community got together and bought the Topos Tula Mountain as a precursor to the land trust because they didn't want somebody to put a hotel up there. That's still going strong. The literacy council, if you look at the at the board members of our literacy council, our biological foundation, our land trust, international centers, all those things, half those people are not permanent residents, but they are community residents. Okay, and you are going to lose all that. If this is what we sell, it's a great place to live. If you lose the great place to live, what are you going to do? You're going to turn into a tourist town. The economics of short-term rentals in the housing cost is what's driving this absolute need to put a kibosh on this. Because if you can't buy a residential property priced at a return on investment, nobody who wants it as a home can afford that. And that's what's happened now. But our UDO, we are the people who decided. Courts don't decide, the state doesn't decide. We decide that overnight accommodations are commercial. Commercial does not go, we have commercial zones and we have residential zones. So the commercial goes in commercial zones and the residential goes in residential zones. To me, it's just simple logic with simple language. Okay, maybe they weren't called short-term rentals 15 years ago when we put these these words in there, but that's exactly what they are. Short-term rentals are for visitors. Overnight accommodations are for visitors. It's the exact same thing. And so I don't believe that there was any is any legal precedent that says short-term rentals are residential, not commercial, because nobody decides that except the local government. And our local zoning ordinance has decided that. It's not the state's job to do and it's certainly not the 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 court's job to do. They don't make law. We make law. Legislative bodies make law. So I may have more comments later, but that was to rebut that you have a legal right to do this. There is no legal right to do this. Basically, it has been, yes, we have have rented for years. Mostly when I was growing up here, a lot of seasonal winters, you know, became more short-term as as things went on, but they weren't a problem. Okay, they weren't a driver. We still had neighborhoods where people really wanted to live. It's changed and because it's changed, we need now to say, okay, wait, we couldn't enforce it before because who the heck knows if it was, you know, somebody's kids who are coming up to visit or you lent your house to somebody, there's no way of enforcing that. So you couldn't say, okay, you're only here two weeks, you must be ready. No, it might be you borrowed somebody's house. Now we have ways of tracking that. Technology, y'all have ways of advertising it through technology. We have ways of tracking it through technology. So it is now enforced. So what we're saying is is we are a community of residents and that's what's built the community. That's what's made us actually glide through every economic downturn with very little problems. And if we go to a tourist tourist economy, simply are not what we want to be. You will lose a lot of what we have here now that has been built, that has been maintained, that has been supported by community residents. So if you're balancing between community residents and visitors, I'm going to prioritize community residents every time because that's who we are.
Any other comments and statements from the board? Hearing none. Let's move on to the next item and that's the discussion and prioritization of major components of the short-term rental ordinance amendment. Let me say that, you know, in my opinion, this is just the beginning of this process tonight. It's kind of to me a period where we need to take inventory. We have with us on Zoom tonight, our town attorney, Jake Howard, and our other attorney is Chad Issick of Ponier and Spruill. And they're here and will be listening and we can ask them questions and and so forth during this process. But I believe Mr. Issick came up with the idea that we need to kind of go through with the major issues and possibly do a straw poll from the commissioners on how they feel about certain key issues. And we have nine here. That's not to limit it to nine. If the commissioner wants to bring up even additional topics that we need to discuss, that that is fine. But I'm going to ask our attorneys, Jay or Chad, would you like to make any comments before we start this process?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't really have any comments at this time, but I'm happy to answer any questions as you work through these issues and discuss the policies, options that are before the board tonight in the various versions of the different ordinances. So again, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, and you will be taking notes and getting feedback from the board as to what you feel like are our positions on these issues, correct?
Yeah, correct. Yep.
Shall I just then start with the first item and I'm going to throw this open to the board to discuss it and then we'll take a poll as to where our individual commissioners stand. The first idea would be to stop new short-term rentals in R1 and R2. I will open up the floor for any feedback and discussion.
Mayor, we we had somebody come to the public hearing who talked about he retired, he invested in a house, he was finishing construction and and we were telling him in June that he wasn't going to be able to rent it, I think in July. And that just seems unfair to me for these projects that are that people have invested in and that are underway. It just seems to me that we ought to be a period for projects that are permitted to be completed. And I've heard the discussion about maybe putting a limit on the number. I think the best guess right now is 400.
Well, I would say that my position would be that that we stop having any new SDRs as of the date of the ordinance in R1 and R2. We already have neighborhoods that are, you know, 30, 40% SDRs and that's that's destroying the nature of our neighborhoods. Again, if it's not a nice place to live, then they're going to, they're going to leave. They're no, we're no longer going to have those community residents. I don't think there's any way that you can, we're we're not here to guarantee somebody's investment. And the fact is, is the neighbor may have made a huge investment in their home and now they're having to live next to an SDR or between two SDRs. And so the investment argument to me, I mean, I could say I did that and now I'm saying, oh my gosh, I want to be an SDR, even though I had no idea that I could do that, but I want that as an option. So there's just no way of doing of figuring out who invested for what. And frankly, we don't guarantee somebody's investment. I could have invested a whole lot and started a business and you're not going to guarantee that it's going to go.
Can I ask Jay two hard questions?
Sure.
Jay, what's your opinion about the status of our current regulations regarding short-term rentals?
Well, my opinion's always been the same. I think it's.
I think it's unclear, and I think the whole purpose of what we've been working on for over a year now is to make a a clear piece of legislation that no one argues about.
Yes, sir. And and what's your opinion about Russell versus Donaldson?
And in what regards?
That's the case that that Amy and I were going back and forth about in the Court of Appeals. Whether or not short term rentals are residential in nature.
I think that the the court has spoken on that. But our our UDO could be more clear about it. I agree with Amy that we're we're the ones who are going to pass legislation. We just need to pass clear legislation. And we can avoid the the commercial residential distinction altogether uh by passing different kind of legislation for the UBO, and that's what we've sought to do. We haven't really gone back to the UBO and attempted to say uh what the definition between the two are. And that's basically because of that case.
I would say in the Russell versus Donaldson case, that was an HOA. That has nothing to do, nobody gives them authority to accept they, you know, under the, I guess, the HOA ordinance of the the um general statutes, um authority to make land use decisions. And that's what what we have there. That's an entirely different thing. I don't think you can apply the Russell versus Donaldson case and say the courts decided this was residential, not commercial. In our case, it's an entirely different. You know, jurisdiction, you know, we are, we are, we are a legislative body, they are not. We are, we have made the rules with the process going through, and we have defined overnight accommodations as commercial, and that is our job to do, nobody else's.
I I don't want to argue the point, but I think that most legal thinking uh associates homeowners associations and municipalities more or less on the same level as far as land use regulations are concerned. They both do pretty much exactly the same thing.
Amy, are you through? May I speak?
Yeah.
Okay, I I think the the they, I agree, our regulations are vague. I've been in two committee meetings of the North Carolina American Planning Association, and there's no secret that state legislature is considering making changes to the planning laws because they believe some municipalities are contributing to the housing crisis. And I just think we have to be careful about what we do and not hurt people that have acted in good faith when our regulations weren't vague. So I think we have to be very, very careful about these projects that are permitted and people that are invested in and that are underway.
I don't think they will contribute to a housing crisis. I mean, they will contribute in a negative way to the housing crisis. If you look at basically all the the national studies, and I'm talking about people like Harvard Business Review or the Economic Policy Institute. They have basically come out and said SDRs have a negative impact on affordable housing by raising all the rents and reducing the supply, which is a supply and demand thing, so it immediately raises the rent. So if you're talking about we need to have SDRs because it'll help the housing situation, and then and the state legislature wants to address that, I'm not sure that they're not contrary to what you're talking about.
No, I think it's a multi regression problem. I think there are a lot of factors at play. It's not not
If there's not, I'm just saying, SDRs contribute to a housing crisis.
Um, I I have one clarification. Russell versus Donaldson. Can anyone give me the date that that decision was rendered?
That I can. It was a two thousand twelve opinion, and just to add a little bit more context on on that, again, like one of the commissioners mentioned. My my recollection of that case is that it was a private restrictive covenant that prohibited commercial uses in a particular residential subdivision, and the court was wrestling with whether or not, I don't think commercial was defined. And so it was whether or not this short term rental use under that private covenant was residential or commercial. I do think the that you guys as a local government have the ability to define your uses, how you see fit, and in what category they go under. Um, and so I think it's a a separate analysis to some extent. Um, then interpreting the private covenant that didn't have the definition of what was commercial or what was residential within the the document within the the definition, so.
Here's my observation about that case in rendering concerning, you know, that it's not commercial in residential areas. That was ten ten years ago. I think that maybe courts should be revisiting that because that that was a decade ago in the context of short term rentals and the spread was not anywhere near what we're seeing today. Um, you know, actually, if you go back and look at, for example, Steamboat Springs, I was reading an article on that just this past week. They had the same type of of increase in short term rentals, the same pattern as we have, starting right before the pandemic, taking off in the during the pandemic and and continuing. Other thing that that puzzles me about this whole situation is when people say um short term rentals are residential uses and they're not commercial. Yet the state requires you to collect room occupancy tax the same at the same level as if you're in a hotel. So how can you just kind of separate that and say, well, it's a residential use, yet you're having to say pay the same tax as a hotel? I think there's some inconsistency, and yes, Commissioner Haim, I do, I understand that the state legislature might preempt municipalities on the issues of our ability to zone and regulate these um these um ordinances that might, you know, come about. So um, that's that's a concern. Okay, any other comments about this? And and let me phrase it this way, stopping the spread of short term rentals in R one and R two. I think that's the question. Should we stop the spread of short term rentals in R one and R two?
I agree.
Mr. Mayor, I think my only concern uh with that would be uh maybe not an only concern, certainly, but anyone who has uh proceeded since this time last year uh with moving forward or buying or uh starting any kind of construction certainly should have done so with the thought in mind that this discussion is going on. And 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 to move forward in the face of uncertainty uh certainly doesn't lend itself to any credibility as far as I'm concerned on saying I have a right to do that.
I don't understand if when the committee was meeting, did they meet with both sides? Or just one side, Mr. Mayor?
What committee and what side? I don't think we met with any com- any side.
Mark, we're not, we're not, we're not taking their position and their position. We're figuring out what's in the middle. We're doing what's best for Highlands, and that is what we are, that is our duty. That is what we are charged to do. Do we take into consideration what it does to people and how it affects them and what their opinions are? Yes. But our duty stated in the state constitution is to act for the benefit of the whole. So we have to think, who is Highlands? What is Highlands? Where do we want to go with Highlands? What do we want it to be in five years, ten years, whatever? And then we have to put apply short term renters specifically to, does it get us where we want to go? And or does does it not? So it's not, if this is not a negotiation where this is a contract here, and I'll do this if you'll pay me that and that kind of that's not what this is. We are a legislative body that is supposed to do what's best for the whole. And so we decide what's best for the whole, and then we apply the rules so that we achieve the best for the whole.
May I speak now?
Sure.
Um, Amy, we've heard from nine lawyers. I think we paid one, two, three, four of them. One of them works for government. And they, and we all, and you're right, we took an oath to comply with the constitution laws of the state of North Carolina, and we've had three different opinions. Yes, you can do this. No, you can't, or you're in a big gray area. So it's really not clear to me that we have the authority to do what what's been proposed.
Okay, so it's clear to me.
Okay, let's let's let me call the question here. Um, get a get feedback from each commissioner. Should we stop the spread of short term rentals in R one and R two? Any new ones stopping the development of new ones?
Yes.
Let me
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor says yes. Commissioner Pete Pearson?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, and
I think you're being very unfair to people that have borrowed money, uh acted in good faith with vague regulations and proceeded, you know, to make an investment. And I and I would go back, Mr. Mayor, to a year ago. A year ago, you asked me if I thought we ought to enforce the town zone ordinance. And I've been asking for that since I walked in the door. You know, we need to enforce our zoning ordinance. But our zoning ordinance isn't clear.
Mark, Mr. Mayor, can I say something? Mark, I think uh to to say that uh we're stopping it black and white to me is a misnomer. Because I think at some point if if we're going to have to do that, we're gonna, there has to be a bar that people pass either over or under. And and for people, uh the example that I mentioned a few minutes ago, if somebody started something forty five days ago, and they're saying, well, wait a minute, you can't do this to me, that has very, very little standing with me. If you started something last July, and God knows, construction these this day and age, certainly you could have started something last July and just now becoming on board, so to speak. Sure. That would certainly hold a lot more weight with me as as being able to say this was my intent, this is where I thought I was before this happened, and this is where I want to go. Not saying that we'll allow it, but I don't think just saying, oh, we're going to stop it with no parameters uh is a valid position to take.
Okay. All right.
If that makes any sense.
Let us move on to item number two, the issue of short term rental permits. And and one of the things why we have this listed, um, item four, we have issue of nonconforming use permits. But the question is, should we issue short term rental permits? So open up the floor for discussion, and yes, I know that there's been a lot of court just review and everything, and the state has passed, tried to clarify the idea of not allowing um blanket permits for renting.
I think the the permit issue is a is a is maybe a dated issue that allowed us municipalities and and zoning enforcement and the planning directors to know what is out there. I think in the in this day and age with with um, you know, social media and software and all those kind of things, I think we're, we can so so one of the the major reasons for for permitting is to know who is there and are they complying? Okay, well, like, you know, permitting is to know who is there, and they get a list of rules, but whether they're complying or not, you have to go check. Well, we we can figure that out without having a permit process. I think it's because of the 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 court rulings and it's permitting and registration the same and those kind of things. I think that is an argument that we don't need to get into. And I think if we can do what we need to do without permitting, okay, which is is enforcement, which is, you know, making sure they're adhering to the regulations, which we can do by the software that allows us to know who and what is out there. I don't think we need to fight the fight about permits. Is a permit a registration? Is a registration a permit? Because you you will get challenged on that. It's just semantics. That would be my opinion. I don't think it gains us anything, and it and it and it's it's something that we don't need to fight about.
I I agree. I think that lawyers could come to an agreement about this because the existing ones are going to want to document their nonconforming use. So I think that this is something that the two lawyers could resolve with the lawyers on the other side. How are we going to document the existing nonconforming uses? That that really needs to be done. Because, I mean, you hear from what you came up with two hundred, I think, Josh, or two seventy? And then the neighborhood association says four hundred, and nobody really has any clue how many there are out there.
Well, the two hundred and seventy was based on data.
Correct, yes, but I mean, the people that are in the business say they're four hundred, so.
Well, they're guessing, unless they should can show me some data. I I I like to base my my arguments and decisions on data. If you give me the data, then I'll then I'll say, okay, that's a that's a valid number.
Well, that's what we're trying to do is document how many nonconforming uses we have.
Yes, that's what the the software allows us to do.
Say no to the permitting.
Okay, I was going to bring this up. Commissioner Haim, you're
You're asking if I want to do a registration? I think that I think that the lawyers ought to talk about how how best how best to document a nonconforming use. The code applied, the code gives them an opportunity to write the zoning official and and state there is existing nonconforming use. We have to decide how we're going to do that.
We'll get to that, but are you are you on board that we not require permits?
Well, we can't register. We know that.
Okay.
That's what Schroder says versus City of Wilmington.
In some ways, yes. Okay. All right. Commissioner Pearson?
I think it's a new point of sorts.
Okay, no permits?
No.
No, okay. So permitting is all yeah. So we're all, the next thing. Again, grandfathering existing short term rentals in R one and R two. I will open up the floor for discussion about grandfathering existing units.
Grandfathering in perpetuity?
The grandfathering existing short term rentals in R one and R two. You bring up the question? In perpetuity?
It's a zoning thing, so it doesn't go with the ownership of the land. It is goes with the land. And so if you if you allow them for if you allow them as a nonconforming use, unless they, you know, go out of business or stop or whatever, it's forever.
Well, it's actually unless they go out of business for more than a year, right? It's a year, isn't it, Josh?
Twelve months.
Twelve months.
Okay.
So I I would say if if the option is grandfathering them or allowing them as a nonconforming use, this is, this is
I don't think we're at that point.
Well, we can regulate. But what I'm saying is, is when you're talking about a nonconforming use, basically, we have created a privileged class of of properties if if you basically allow them to be nonconforming forever. And one of the tenants of land use regulation is everybody in a zone is treated exactly the same. So we're creating a a spot zoning within a zone basically that these people can do more than these people can do. And and I don't, I don't know that to me, anyway, everybody should go by the same rules. And that's, you know, I go back to the fact that we have defined overnight accommodations as commercial, and so I've never thought that they were allowed. Enforcement was a problem, and now they it's, and they, and and we're not the Gestapo. We don't go out and look and say, oh, are you doing, are you doing? It most land use laws actually enforcement of land use law is actually complaint driven. Well, we've had the complaints now, and that's what we're doing, what we're doing here. So I would say no to grandfathering in perpetuity.
Okay.
But the, and Amy, in two thousand twelve, you passed a UDO that said, Josh, tell us what it said. As far as grandfathering or nonconforming uses. We have the power to rezone. There's no question about that. We can change a district, but a nonconforming is what does our existing two thousand and twelve UDO say about that?
I don't have it in front of me.
But it basically says they can stay as long as they don't go out of business for twelve months. They can burn down and be replaced.
But every one of those things, that is, that is on a case by case basis. I I think what you're, what we're talking about here is, do we And I, I think what you're, what we're talking about here is, do we, do we allow them as a non-conforming use forever? Or do we amortize? That's the alternative. And so when you ask, do we allow them as non-conforming use or do we amortize, I think that's the question.
But, but see, then people, Jay made business decisions based on the UDO that said, yeah, you can change his owning, but you can stay. You know, that's what they were told when they made the original investment, whenever it was, between two thousand twelve.
So it's however you interpret it.
Yeah, the intent was always that, that it was not going to be in residential because it's commercial. Changing the name doesn't change what it is.
I'm gonna, go ahead, Mr. Mayor. What, rather than the two options that we have, which is grandfathering no or grandfathering yes based on use, what if we were to, and I'm just throwing this out for the discussion processes we go forward, instead of grandfathering for the use, and I hate to use the word grandfather, but what if we allow the use until the property changes hands? That would stop the negative growth monetary incentive.
That's the question of our attorneys.
Maybe one of the attorneys could, could weigh in. Can, can we state that, that something only lasts for the current property owner? But if you don't call it grandfathering?
What about properties that are owned as business? These LLCs and the malls, houses.
Minute they change. Well, is, is, but I'm saying, as long as they do, it, I mean, potentially, there's the prospect of something lasting thirty or forty years. But.
Craig Justice.
Somebody dies, if they leave it to their kids, it stops.
Attorneys?
I, I was gonna say, I know what Craig Justice would say about that.
I was gonna say the same thing, Jay.
Has that, that you can't do that.
Right.
I will say that zoning typically regulates the use of land and not the ownership of land. And so I would be leery of something that, because of a change in ownership, changed the, the zoning rights of that particular property.
Okay.
Okay. So I think the question we have here is grandfathering existing short-term rentals in R1 and R2. And I'm gonna stutter over this word, in perpetuity, perpetuity, yes, thank you. That is the question. Who's in favor?
Grandfathering, you mean the honoring the existing ordinance?
In perpetuity, though.
That's what it says, you know. Jay, did you see the notice that was in the Derek Allen letter that said, talked about negligence, if we knowingly do something that we think is unlawful, then we're acting negligently? Did you see that? Like the last page of his letter?
I saw that, too.
So, that's a big question, whether or not we're doing something lawful.
As my statement said, I, I hear what you're saying, but also there are nuances and interpretations of, of laws, which I think we have to, to analyze.
So what is your question, Mr. Mayor?
Grandfathering short-term rentals in R1 and R2 in perpetuity, is that what the board would want to see when it comes to grandfathering?
I think we should follow the existing UDO, which says that they can stay.
So.
Unless they stop the use for twelve months or more, then they lose their grand, they're not performing it.
But other than that, it's grandfathered in perpetuity.
That's what, that's what the existing code says.
Okay, so that's your position? Yeah, I gotta speak into it, my man?
It's not on, Eric, it's not on.
Okay, thank you. Buzz, what's your feeling?
I said, it also says no overnight accommodations in the UDO.
He just made a point. So, Buzz, what's your position on this?
No.
No? Amy?
Grandfathering through perpetuity, no.
Okay.
No.
No.
I think we ought to follow the code, which says that it's not in perpetuity.
Yes.
No, we ought to follow the code. We've got an existing code, we ought to follow it.
Okay. No. No. All right. Oh. Okay.
Shades of gray, Mayor.
Yeah. Yes, it is. Okay, the next one would be the issuance of non-conforming use permits. Should we issue non-conforming use permits? And, you know, there's been discussions about registration and, and permits just across the board for short-term rentals. It's my understanding, even with the Wilmington case, the non-conforming use permits apply to zoning regulations and could be permissible as a part of an ordinance. So I'll throw that open, what's your feeling about non-conforming use permits?
I don't know that I see any value to them. If we're not, if we're not permitting a specific use, we don't have that many non-conformers, we have a few, until we get to FDRs. Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out if, if it's a, if, if it's a necessary thing for us to do, if, if it will help us in any way to, to keep high as we want it to be.
Mr. Mayor, I would say no to non-conforming use permits.
Okay.
Like I'd say no to.
Perry?
No.
Buzz?
Mayor, I think we ought to follow the state law. The state law says, yes, you can zone, change the zoning, but every property owner has the right to write the zoning administrator, tell them they're a non-conforming use. I don't understand why we're fighting about this. I tried to get us to do settlement negotiations, I asked for a mediator, that all failed. I really think we ought to get an elementary school counselor to talk to both sides because we could resolve this problem because everybody's gonna want to document their non-conforming use.
Okay, so you're for issuing non-conforming use permits?
I'm for the lawyers sitting down and talking to the other side about how. Because they're suing us, they're saying we're requiring registration when we mentioned the permit. So I think there's a way.
Whoa, 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 hold on. If we don't require rental permits, and we don't comply that, how are they gonna sue us for something that we're not doing, Mark?
Well, that's in their complaint, that, that we've.
That can be in their complaint all day, but if we're not doing that in the ordinance, it's a moot point.
But, but they have the right to be, to document their non-conforming use. How are we going to do that? I think it can be resolved, I really do.
Can, can I have a point of order, please? Did Commissioner got some vote?
I did not.
No, he, he's still mulling over the. He's mulling.
That's right.
And I'm gonna assume, Mr. Hane, that you would say that we have to issue non-conforming use permits?
Well, we don't want to require registration. I think we can find a way to document it because the law allows the property owner to, to put the town on notice they're non-conforming use, and the town's required to tell him what is, to give him an answer and his right to appeal. So it's, it's really not simple, it's complicated.
But, can I, can I jump in for just a second, Mayor?
Yes.
I, I think if you decide to not issue non-conforming use permits, I think that any property owner at any time could request that the zoning administrator make a determination as to their non-conforming use status based on whatever evidence they have as to whether or not they had commenced the use prior to the effective date of the ordinance. So I think that any property owner could make that request and get a determination without, and that would be voluntary, without any sort of, sort of permitting requirement.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's kind of where I'm going. If, if we take one route, then maybe no to non-conforming use permits. If we take a different route, then yes.
Okay.
It just depends on where we wind up in these discussions. Yeah, we don't know where we're going yet, we're trying to get there. If we take one road. Yeah.
So, here is where I think we stand in the straw poll on this issue. We have three no's, one yes, and one wait and see. Mr. Doc?
Well, I think it's a wait and see.
That's pretty darn close for me.
Okay.
We don't know that we can require permits, Mr. Mayor, but it's something I think the other side has said that they object to. But I think it's something that everybody would agree that needs to be done.
Okay.
Can I have another point of order, please?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Dawson says, wait and see, that means he hasn't voted, which means it's counted as a yes. Excuse me, it's counted as no, don't issue any non-conforming use permit.
At this time?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not passing anything tonight.
No.
Straw poll, and my, my straw is short.
I don't think we're making a final determination.
Okay, let's move on then to the next item, number five, non-conforming use definition changes. Josh, would you mind, mind just kind of amplify what, why that is here?
Well, I think it was, there were some questions on non-conforming use. In the code, there is, as Commissioner Hane said, which, which is with any zoning code, a non-conforming use, non-conforming section, which covers non-conforming uses, non-conforming lots, and non-conforming buildings. So currently, if I'm not mistaken, the non-conforming building state, that you cannot expand, enlarge a non-conforming building. The use is not clear on that, and it needs to be clarified to make it consistent with the building itself.
With your explanation, I would think that, um, that is a need that we would agree on, agree on, that we need to make sure that that whole definition and changes is consistent with anything else we do moving forward.
May I ask you, Mr. Mayor? We've got the letter from the three hotels.
Right.
You know, that said, oh, you move here, you're gonna move something else. And it is, we've got to be careful what we do. Because the three biggest hotels are non-conforming uses.
So I think with the non-conforming motel, and, and I, I don't think, from what I read in the emails, is that they are non-conforming uses of B1. We don't allow hotels in B1 anymore because B1 requires parking, public parking to be used. They don't, they don't require its own parking. So therefore, if we continue to have more and more hotels downtown, you know, nobody would have anywhere parked. So they are non-conforming now. They can basically use the property as they have always used it with the number of rooms that they have always used. They cannot add rooms to those motels, and that would be with any non-conforming use. It's already stated in the non-conforming building, you cannot expand the building or enlarge the building. So the use should have said the same thing, but it was, it was a little vague. And so basically, at this point, any of those motels could not come in now and add five rooms to their motel as a B1.
Right.
Most of them don't have the room to do that anyway, but they couldn't come in and add rooms.
And it seems to me this is.
This clarifies that. Understanding of this statement.
And, and our attorneys can, can clarify the, that definition to make it consistent. We're in agreement with that?
We're gonna get, do I hear you say there's gonna be a new definition, and we're gonna receive comment on that? Is that what you're saying?
We certainly will review it, of course. Absolutely. Okay. Let's move on to item number six, intensification. And that ill-fated ordinance that we had to rescind, or it was never approved because of the problems of notification of the public hearing, a component was the idea of intensification, which I know, Josh, you feel like would be very difficult to document and enforce. What is the feeling of the board on intensification? In other words, someone doing a non-conforming use, there might be different levels of operation based on what they've done in the past.
I think that's, again, one of those things that has to, has to be qualified. If you're, if you're amortizing over a few years, I don't think it's, it's in any way valuable to not allow intensification. Okay, there are no, that if they're gonna add on and do anything, they're gonna be ceasing in, in whatever amortization time it is, so it doesn't really matter. If you, if we had decided to grandfather for forever, then the intensification would have been something that we needed to address. If we're not gonna grandfather for forever, which is what the straw poll has said, then I don't think it's, I, I don't think it's a value-added kind of thing because it's the kind of thing that they're not gonna intensify in any way. And if expanding, maybe the number of times they do it, you know, but it's still, there, there's a cutoff date that, that I don't think it, it behooves us to be so harsh that we're not gonna let them do what they can do for the amount of time we allow them to do it.
Commissioner Dawson, your feeling?
Well, I agree with what, what Amy just said. I think the question needs to be clarified. Your question to us needs to be clarified based on, again, which road we're gonna take, I mean.
I think if, if amortization is where we go and it's uphill, then yes, it's, it doesn't matter. But if we're forced to go another way, then I think it does, come with the context. So I don't, I don't know how we can determine whether or not.
Yeah, I think that's a question we need to have a week or two or next month or whenever the next, when we get to it.
Commissioner Staylor, would you like to weigh in on this?
Yeah, I would agree with Eric's comments. But I think we need to wait and see what direction this goes before we can answer that.
Mike, and Mr. Hane?
I'm not a risk taker, and the, one of the lawyers urges us not to go down that road.
Okay. So that is an item that's in play, but it's on hold until we see where we're going with the full review of the ordinances. Is that in agreement? Okay, let us move on to number seven, amortization. And it also has two or three years. Comments on the possibility of doing amortization? And, and I'll just start this off, if we were to follow that, that choice of amortization, certainly, it would be challenged in court. And the outcome of that would be determined by the, the judges reviewing on that whole concept of amortization as applied to short-term rentals.
I think, I think two years is, is, is my personal opinion, and that's based on some of the work with the attorneys, going by some past cases. And I guess the Wilmington case might be one of that. Where they, I think they tried to do it in a lot shorter time. So I think two years is, is a, is a good amount of time for people to. Amount of time for people to do what they need to do.
I'm gonna ask Chad, if, if Chad, would you respond to? This topic and, and the timeframe?
Yeah, so you know, the topic of amortization, I, I did go back and, you know, listen to your public hearing that you had, you know, North Carolina. Um has um upheld amortizations um of, you know, dating back to cases from the nineteen seventies typically related to billboards. Um adult establishments, junkyards, um you know, those time periods have, have ranged. Uh in time and the amount of duration depending on what's being amortized. You know, the issue in Wilmington case, it was a one-year amortization. The Superior Court dismissed that challenge to the amortization, the takings claim that they had, and the Court of Appeals didn't address it substantively. On whether or not, you know, amortization was uh, that provision was, was allowed. It was tied in with. Their registration and lottery requirements and separation requirements, and that's why. It, it didn't survive, but it wasn't on the substantive issue on whether or not you could amortize. Um you know, there are. Cases in other jurisdictions. There's a case out of New York from two thousand twenty. Uh that, that allowed amortization of short-term rentals. It's a case out of Oregon from a good while back. Um you know, I know there was mention of the case out of Austin where they struck down amortization provision. I will note that that case, uh the court relied on the Texas State Constitution, which had some. Uh limitations regarding retroactive laws, and that was what they based their decision on. So I think each. Um analysis of amortization will be, you know, under the US Constitution as well as under the state constitution and state law. And the, in the, the law, you know, as it exists today, um has upheld amortization. Now. There's been no law in North Carolina specific to amort, amortization of short-term rentals. So. Um you know, there's no guidance with respect to that. Obviously, the longer the period, um the, the, the less legal scrutiny. Um because there's more time to, you know, arguably recoup any investments that were made. Um you know, before the amortization. So um you know, I can't give you, uh you know, you know. This number of years or that number of years are, are gonna be sufficient. I will say that, you know. Uh you know, I, I would, I would, I would say. I don't think I would do anything less than two years. Um and you know. You know, there could be a longer period depending on what policy decision the board wants to make.
And, and what I'm hearing you say, Chad, is we could become, if we chose amortization, we could be a statewide test case over. Um this concept being applied to short-term rentals.
That's correct. If not, somebody else sooner. I know there are other local governments that are evaluating amortization as well. Uh so you know, um it, it, it could be Highlands, it could be another local government.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd uh if, if we go down. That road, uh I would actually prefer to see a longer amortization. Uh and I would suggest an amortization time of three years.
Okay.
You know, certainly that's, that's not gonna give. Everybody what they want, but it's, it's a, a longer ramp. For both parties, all parties. And if, if uh. Mr. Essex said. Two years. At least, uh then I think three would, would certainly, hopefully, uh. Allow all parties to, to come to a, in conclusion, including the state of North Carolina.
And let me ask um Mr. Essex this. If we go to court and over amortization. We would have to go through the Superior Court and then a series of appeals. What kind of a time, timeframe do you think we would be facing before this was finally resolved, resolved by the courts of the state? Uh in another way, could we get this resolved in three, two years, three years? What's your feeling?
Uh I think um it's hard to predict. You, you don't know exactly how, what course a case would take, but I, I certainly think. It would be. Close to being through the appellate courts depending on. Uh whether it's, it's just heard by the Court of Appeals or it's heard by the Supreme Court, but I would say three years.
Okay.
Schroeder case, Ted.
It was decided in April of twenty-two. I wanna say they filed it in nineteen. Hold on one second. Uh they, they filed suit in the summer of twenty nineteen.
That was awesome.
And it was decided at the Court of Appeals uh in April of twenty-two.
Okay.
How, how did COVID affect the uh, uh court schedules?
I'm sorry, I missed that question.
Sorry. How did, how did COVID in twenty and twenty-one affect the court schedules?
Uh. I don't recall. I know the Superior Court hearing was in person, so I don't recall there being that much of an impact from COVID. I didn't argue the case. My law partner did, so I, I don't, I wasn't as involved in the Wilmington case. Um so I can't remember exactly when those arguments were made in Superior Court, but I don't recall there being a COVID delay of significance. But you know, just to, you know, where you have a um. You know, if there was a split decision at the Court of Appeals or if a party petitions the Supreme Court. Um you know, that could add on to the time, timeframe for a resolution depending on what the outcome is. So. Again, that was Superior Court through um the Court of Appeals decision.
Okay, thank you. Right.
I'd like to ask him a question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Chad, Chad, if they uh adopt amortization, uh do you think the court would award a stay and nothing would happen?
Well, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I wouldn't wanna speculate on that, although, you know, as a practical matter. Nothing is happening in that three-year period. So I guess a stay would only be needed if you were getting close to that period, although they could request, I mean, I, I, there could be a request for one, but. You know, there could be, and you know, the other, I will say this, and you know, and I think this is. Common knowledge, you know, the, this has been a topic of, of conversation at the state level, at the General Assembly. Uh to come back in for a long session in January.
Yes.
Um and I don't, I don't, you know, I don't know where that might go or what may come down from the state level that may. Bring clarity to a lot of these issues for local governments. So. Um you know, it. That's something also to consider, I suppose.
But, but let's clarify, the concept would be unless we allowed it, if we just said, if you've been. Operating as a short-term rental, you can continue for the three years that we're. Having the cutoff date for amortization. You can continue operating as a short-term rental. If the courts ruled against the town of Highlands, then that would be a whole different um. Situation with the short-term rentals and grandfathering and all the other issues we're talking about. If the courts rule that yes, we can amortize, then that's a whole different. Application that we can enforce with our zoning, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Uh Chad, I had one question. If, if we do a, a three-year amortization, um it. From the time that the ordinance is passed and it, and that amortization, either the length or amortization at all is challenged. Is there a, a limitation on how long that can be or that, could they challenge it, you know? Two and a half years later and then get a stay of it for an extended period of time?
Um. There are, I may need to get back to you on that question. I need to look at, I need to double check my answer on that. Uh but. There is um typically, I believe, a one-year statute of limitations for procedural uh irregularities and then. A three-year statute of limitations on the substantive, but I need to check on that. So your, what you've described could potentially happen, I suppose. But I need to double check that and make sure I'm giving you the right answer.
Okay. Let me take the poll. Should we continue to keep amortization on the table as an option?
I wanted to ask one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Um Josh, you shared with Chad that email from Rebecca. Uh Badgett that said that if you did this, you'd have to tie it to the police power of the state. Of the town, I'm sorry. Did you see that? Chad. Rebecca Badgett's uh comments.
I may have, but I honestly, I'm not recalling. I've seen a, a lot of stuff. I'm not specifically recalling it. But I'd happy, be happy to take a look at it and, and respond once I've had a chance to review it.
She's with the school government, Chad.
Correct. Okay, let's. Do a straw poll about keeping amortization as an option. Commissioner. Dotson.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson, Commissioner Hane.
I think this is reckless and we're gonna bankrupt the town of Highlands.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, alright, very good. Okay. Let me go back to your question. Why would we bankrupt the town of Highlands?
Uh just assume we've got four hundred short-term rentals.
Got it.
Okay, assume they make. Forty thousand a year.
Got it.
But they're still able to operate, Mark, during that time. You don't.
We haven't stopped them.
You're gonna stop them in three years. Assume they're gonna, they wanna be held. You would, if I took forty thousand a year out of your pocket, you'd say, Mark, make me whole, right?
I, I'm, I'm not gonna get into that, Mark, but, but I, I've heard you say this over and over. That then they would come back and sue us for millions of dollars.
Hundreds of millions.
Okay, but if the courts rule in our favor. What leg would they have to stand on that they could come back now and say, oh, you denied me? The courts, the Supreme Court, if it goes to that, would say this is legal and the town of Highlands can do that. Why would then you think they could come back and now bankrupt the town?
We get sued for five hundred million dollars. That's the problem.
We could get sued for five hundred, you know. By anyone at any, any time. Okay, alright. Um. I just, I find that interesting, your, your, your concern there. Okay. Um the minimum night stay is the next item. What is your feeling about a minimum night stay? For example, the planning board. Proposed in their um amendments, a seven-day stay. So what's the feeling of the board on minimum night stay?
What, what is this for? Minimum night stay for what?
When they recommended their, you know, ordinance, they said a, a seven day, you had to stay seven days.
Yeah, but I think we need to kind of find out where our course is going with their amortization or not in the days. I don't, I don't think that that's.
So are you talking about if we, if we um say no SDRs in R1 in R2? The minimum night stay is applying to the other zones? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying, do we want to have minimum night stays and ordinances? Like you, you have to stay at least three days, four days, seven days. You can only be rent a minimum of so many days.
I don't think it's pertinent to, until we know the direction.
You know, I, I.
I think it's an option we can look at if we get turned down.
I think they were, because the planning board was allowing them in all zones. They were putting a minimum night stay on. If you're not allowing them, there's no reason to have a minimum night stay unless my logic is all wrong.
Well, let me just say this. Let's say you were doing amortization and you allowed people, you know, to operate for three years. Would you want them to have a minimum night stay required or would you just?
No, I think you allow them to operate exactly how they're operating.
Okay, fine.
I mean, something we can look at.
I think I'm getting a straw poll feedback that's pretty clear on this.
The school of government said we should not do that.
Mr. Mayor, I have a comment on that.
Okay.
Um I think going forward, if we are going to amend uh. The UDO. As far as definitions are concerned, I think uh we've all talked about what would and would not be. Uh acceptable as far as residential. Stays are considered, what's not considered short-term rental. Then I think uh. If we're going to go there, then I think we need to codify what we consider to be not a short-term rental.
Okay.
Whether it be thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, so that people in the future don't get caught up. With a thirty-day rental and at some point, the town board says, well, you know, we're considering thirty days to be short-term.
Yes.
So you're talking about the, the definition of.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if, if we move forward, the mayor's asking if we should have a, a minimum night stay. I think we should state what a minimum is.
See, and I'm not sure, think about it this way, a minimum night stay, a short-term rental is either over thirty days. Or. It could also be a frequency. In other words, I could rent, I don't know how you would enforce that people, somebody stays in thirty days. But you could enforce that once it was rented in that thirty-day period, you can't rent it again. So it's a frequency. In other words, you can't turn over renters within thirty days as opposed to making them stay thirty days.
So then you're saying somebody could come in for a weekend once every thirty days?
Correct. That's what they wanted to do.
And I don't, that to me. Is, is something I haven't even considered.
I sent the school of government the planning board's recommendation and Rebecca Badgett said. It gets into this whole nonconforming use. If you've allowed a nonconforming use to rent for three days and you come back and say it's seven. In effect, you're running them out of business. And she recommended against that, right, Josh? Remember that part?
In your email, she mentioned something about a minimum night stay is.
Right.
But she's also drafted, I think, another uh memo that we've also read that, you know, I think everybody needs to read as well. So. I think they give advice, but I don't, I think I would have to rely on our attorneys.
Right, right.
So, let's.
Can I, I'm sorry, Mayor, can I just get clarification?
Yes, sir.
Something I, I. The, the current, the current definition of SDR is, is anything that's less than thirty days would be treated the same. I think the planning board rec. Had divided it up into transient dwelling and whole house, short-term rental where transient dwelling was. Uh seven days or less, and they prohibited that in the R1 and R2, and then fourteen to, to. Thirty days was considered a whole house, short-term rental, which was allowed in. In the R1 and the R2. I guess it was your question, which. Or, or is the board. Wanting to keep short-term rentals as a common definition of less than thirty days? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's my concern is the same. What, what is the definition? And, and do we codify uh that definition ourselves or do we allow it to be? Uh whatever the state legislature says. Which is kind of where we are now.
The ninety days for vacation rent?
No, the thirty days for sure. Anything less than thirty days is considered a short-term rental.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Do we say that?
Yes. Yes.
See, that's my, that's. That's my concern. As we rewrite, if we rewrite uh any definitions. Are we gonna say that?
Yes, you are.
It's not currently said in our, in our UDO. Is it, Josh?
Short-term rental?
No.
Short-term rentals, thirty days. Short term rentals, thirty days.
Less than thirty days is what.
In the proposal today.
Yeah, in, in a proposal.
But we don't have one now. That's, that's part of the problem is we haven't defined short term.
Exactly.
So, so your question is?
My, my question is. In the rewriting, in the reconsideration of the U D O and, and where we go. Do we define short term rentals as anything less than thirty days?
That's what it says in the.
I thought it was linked to the tax laws that you didn't know. An accommodations tax if you stay for more than thirty days. I thought that's, there was some definition there that.
It's ninety days.
Is that right?
It's ninety days. They pay retail tax and accommodations tax on anything less than that. It's called the vacation rental.
Right.
So we're making it thirty days because we have a lot of seasonal.
I think what, I think what the mayor was trying to, to say is to take everything that's in the proposals. The planning board made a recommendation.
Correct.
In R one and R two, if I'm not mistaken. That there'll be a minimum night stay of seven days.
Correct.
So there's a definition, but it's limited, there's a definition of less than thirty days. But there's a limit on R one and R two to seven day minimum night stay. So what he's asking is not to change the definition in the proposals from less than thirty days. What he's saying is, is anybody interested in. Looking at what the planning board proposed, which would be. A minimum for R one and R two, which would be seven days or, or fourteen, I think, is what he's trying to say.
But I don't understand how that would be relevant if we said no in. R one and R two. Then there, you know, if you can't do a short term rental, then you can't do anything other than.
You can't do anything.
Well, if that's the decision that's made, that's the decision that's made. What I think the mayor's trying to do is, is list everything out. Get feedback from that. And if you say no, it sounds like it's a no, then I would just say no.
If I'm going down the decision tree, I'm, I'm, I'm off that branch.
Right.
Okay, you're saying that. Buzz.
No.
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 Okay, no, is to minimum stay, alright? And then the last item on this work schedule tonight in the straw poll, home stays in R one and R two. Um, let me just lead with that, you know, the, the original classic Airbnb model. In cities evolved around people renting out rooms in their homes while they were living in the homes. And we've defined it over the review that we've done as a home stay. Where someone can rent out a portion, portion of their house or rooms. As a short term rental unit. As long as they are actually living in the home during the time of the rental. Um, Josh, have I expressed that pretty clearly?
Actually, it, it's not the homeowner, it's an operator or manager.
It could be.
Have to be, you can see, I think there you, you're gonna have a problem.
And the New Orleans Federal Court um intervening just a few days ago or weeks ago saying. You can't just require it to be the homeowner, it could be a representative of the homeowner.
So in other words, I think then you don't allow home stays because they're just short term rentals.
Yeah, it's just another way to look at it.
It's just a huge loophole that you're allowing them to, you know, you have to squeeze to get through.
And it seems to me that home stays are, are essentially the same thing as a tourist home, they just don't fall under state guidelines.
Right.
This is, this is what some.
We don't want to.
Do that.
Start creating something that, that has no teeth.
I would say this.
Nonenforceable by us.
I would say this, Buzz, if people. How people come up, let's say from Atlanta and stay in their house on the weekend and then those people pay them. I don't know how we'd go about enforcing such arrangements. Um, but. Mark, you were about to say something.
I said, nobody wants to hurt the widows, but I know widow that's doing exactly this and uh.
Everybody wants to hear from widows.
We're supposed to take care of widows and orphans, that's right.
And the other ones too.
I just don't see how a home stays are the same thing as a short term.
Okay.
Nor do I.
So y'all say no?
No.
No?
No, I say no.
Could you question again please?
Um, should we allow home stays in R one and R two?
Absolutely. And we gets into this whole nonconforming use thing too, because a lot of people are doing that today.
Okay, and Brian, you said no.
I said no.
Okay.
Do we even need a use to find this home stay?
This point. Alright.
I mean, if it was, if, if, if it was somebody living.
Let me, let me wrap this up. We've gone through these nine i- items. And done the straw poll. I think it's been a helpful exercise, but of course, I think there's plenty of work. That needs to be done, and I think, of course, we need another meeting to continue this process. Um. What's the board's pleasure and feeling about calling for another work session, meeting? Um, in the near term? One week from now?
What do we need before we can meet again?
What's that?
What do we need before we can meet again that, that is different than what we just did?
Oh, I'm open to suggestions.
In other words.
You need some revisions to the draft that Chad has.
Okay.
Right, and so part of that may depend on when we can get those revisions.
Yeah, alright, so we will basically wait until those revisions are ready for review and then we will call another meeting. To continue.
I think that the revisions are pretty close to what one of the proposals that we had of the three. So the revisions aren't going to take very long. Um. You know, we had one that was, that was entirely uh permit based and nonconforming use based. And then we had the planning board one which put, uh, allowed them everywhere, but put minimum stays on it. And then we had the final one that was, um, they're not allowed, they will be amortized and, and not be. Um, um, over a period of time.
Okay.
So other than taking. Home stay out or however we figure out what we're going to do with home stay, um, I think we're pretty close to what we already needed to do.
I, I think we're a long way away on this whole definition of nonconforming use and how it impacts the other businesses. That is a big, big deal.
And that may be something that we need to address in a different time if you're talking about other nonconforming uses. Right now, we need to get something done for the, in the short term rentals. We've been doing this for a year now and. That's not to say we can't come back and revise something at, at a later date, but if we're talking about all nonconforming uses. And not just dealing with the short term rentals, I think, you know, you're. Basically, you're acting like US Congress and never getting anything done.
Well, you, you got notice from the three largest hotels, it's gonna cause them a big problem.
The U D O is the U D O right now.
I know, but you're tinkering with the definition of uh nonconforming use.
Well, and I wanted to, I wanted to clarify something. So currently in the code, it says a nonconforming use may not have its. Use changed to another nonconforming use. That's all it says. Then it goes into discontinuance of use for. A period of twelve months, basically you lose the, the use, okay? That's all it says. So basically what is in every. Version, starting with the original version. I don't know, Craig Justice started, this went to the planning board twice. Every version has got this updated uh definition per se of nonconforming use. Which is just like the nonconforming building currently states, the nonconforming use may not be changed. Which is already in there, enlarged, expanded, or intensified. So I, I think what we're doing and the purpose behind that was. To clarify what you could do with a nonconforming use like we have a nonconforming building. So that's what you're looking at. If you don't want to change that, then you can remove that and stay with the current. Uh, definition of nonconforming use, which says it just can't be changed to another nonconforming use. That's the decision that. The board has to make here, but I want to, you know, reiterate, that has been in every version that has been recommended from day one.
Okay.
So I don't have a problem with it. I think that's actually just a clarification of what the intent was in the nonconforming article seven anyway.
Let me ask our attorneys, Chad and Jay, um. From what you've heard tonight with the straw polling and the discussion about the different proposals. Um, when do you think you could present a draft proposal that the board could review?
I think we could probably get something in the next few days, or maybe by the end of the week or after the holiday.
Okay. So should, should we just wait until that work is complete and then call for a, for a special workshop meeting?
Or.
I put it on the calendar so everybody knows and if we have to change it, it's better to postpone it than it is to surprise people when it's gonna be.
I agree.
Okay, I'm looking at the calendar for September. Um, we do have the Labor Day next Monday. Um, what about September the eighth?
That's his birthday.
It's about September the second.
September the second?
That's pretty fast.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong.
Or we could wait or do it on a Wednesday or the Tuesday after Labor Day, which would be September the sixth.
Wednesday, Wednesday works best for me.
It's Betsy's birthday dinner. Oh, we just do it on the fifteenth, whatever it is.
I think that um some folks would like for us to continue the, the process.
Yes.
Without delay.
How about Friday morning? Tonight?
I'm working.
Yeah. So you can't meet on the seventh and eighth?
Wolfgang's is full on the eighth, I'm taking her on the seventh and the eighth's her birthday.
Okay. What about Tuesday the sixth?
I could do that sixth.
We're gonna have it ahead of time to read, if he says he's gonna have it after the holiday, it'd be nice to read it a day or two.
Did someone mention Friday the ninth in the morning?
Yes, I, the other, they say they work.
You know, some of the audience works. I, I'd like to make it in a time where they have a potential to show up.
I think evening is certainly a better time for most folks than during the day.
Yeah, I don't want to include anybody just.
We've got a majority on the board that does work for a living.
Apparently.
Well, I say that tongue in cheek, but you know. We have to.
So.
Why were you out on the seventh, Mark?
Taking my wife to her birthday dinner.
At what time?
Five forty-five.
Can you eat quick?
What, what, what would be, what about um the evening of the eighth, which is.
That's her birthday. I, I just couldn't get reservations on her birthday.
Well, you're going to dinner on the seventh.
I know, I'm trying to, you look, mama's not happy, nobody's happy.
Well.
Could you do it the evening of the eighth?
That's my wife's birthday, you know.
But you just celebrated it.
But you're having dinner on the seventh.
If you did on the seventh, then you'd have all, all day.
Why don't we do it on the sixth?
I've already got a meeting that night.
We got a fire meeting. What's wrong with the ninth on the evening?
Absolutely nothing.
I'm sorry?
Nothing.
Okay.
Friday night's great, okay.
What about the fourteenth, which would be the day before the.
Well, he said Friday night.
Um, I've got, I've got a commitment that night.
Okay, fourteenth of what time?
I still think we should do it the eighth. I mean, I don't think forty-eight hours is suffering somebody's birthday.
Six o'clock.
That's just not fair.
You're taking her out, you're taking her out the eight the night before and, you know.
I can't help it, that's, they were cool on me.
At least he's taking her.
How about the twelfth?
What about the twelfth? Could people meet on the twelfth?
Yes.
Amy?
I won't go any longer than that. I mean, that's, that's basically two weeks from now and we don't, this being a whole one, going on a long time, so.
And Brian?
Oh, that's Monday night, they have mountaintop rotary here.
Well, we can move it to, um, we could move it to the.
Do we have YouTube there?
Yeah, we've got screen set up now.
Can't do the thirteen.
Can't do the thirteen.
I still think we should do it through the sixth, no, the seventh or the eighth. Pick your day, Mark, which one are you gonna?
That's just not fair, and it's just not fair.
What's not fair?
Well, yeah, what's not fair?
To be gone two hours.
You want to meet at noon on the twelfth or the seventh? How about that?
What about the rest of the people in the community?
Yeah, the community, I don't want to do it in the evening, so it's a public.
Well, you know, y'all, just remember the time you sent me, what, fourteen hours? You gave me the review of thirty-seven page contract, remember that?
Not sure how that's relevant.
Well, it's moving so fast, we made a huge mistake. Listen, we can't meet the twelfth, how about the thirteenth, Mayor?
I'll be up the thirteen.
I remember that we have the meeting on the eighth of September at six o'clock.
Okay. You have a second? Any further discussion?
Well, how about this eight o'clock?
What about seven?
On the seventh?
Seven o'clock on the eighth.
Seven o'clock on the eighth, alright.
Okay, we'll be seven o'clock on the eighth. All in favor?
You got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, we got a motion on the floor.
You got a motion on the floor, you're gonna have to act on that.
Whichever you'd rather do.
The sixth.
Seven o'clock.
Martin will seven.
Are we talking about the eight?
Eight, whatever time you want to do it.
Seven, okay, seven. All in favor? Oppose, Mr. Haynes has jumped it, but I hope he'll be there. We'll be meeting at seven o'clock on September the eighth. And we'll review the draft proposal. There'll be an amortization component. Yeah, do I have a motion that we adjourned? Yeah, do I have a motion that we adjourned this? We're adjourned. Thank you very much. Thank you, um, Chad, and thank you, Jay, for zooming.
Good job.